Thank you guys for being here. Appreciate your patience while we waited for everyone to have the opportunity to get here by 6:00. Thank you guys that are tuning in digitally, if that's the correct way to describe it. I'm completely computer illiterate and have no idea how we're doing this Facebook Live, but they figured it out. So hopefully there's a large audience that will be able to hear what we have to say, get a lot of questions answered, a lot of rumors and myths dispelled, and know where we're going, at least in the near future. So, first thing I would like to do is, the council is here, obviously. Been great. We're working really hard to put the plan together, execute the plan, and we're trying to do it, or are doing it, all in unison. So, I'm real proud. What I'd like to do first is let's go over the CDC recommendations, then the Department of Public Health's recommendations, so that we know what is out there and what is being recommended, instead of what fake book is telling us is being recommended. Then we want to go to what the city of Orange Beach is doing and what steps we're taking, and again, address social media comments, statements, and probably start taking questions or addressing comments that we've, that come through that are pertinent to information we want to dispel, distribute, I'm sorry.
Mayor, can I stop?
Yes, you can.
Cindy, I'm looking at Facebook, and they're live, and it's not important, it's a way, or we just have to...
You got one of them Chinese phones? We good? Okay. Oh, let me see where I can get where everybody can see this. Is that better? Okay, CDC recommendation, eliminate mask gatherings, identify vulnerable populations, promote daily practice of preventative action, stay home when sick, cover coughs, reduce handshakes, wash hands often for 20 seconds, hand sanitizers, 60% alcohol, clean, frequently touch surfaces, avoid touching eyes, nose, mouth. We've probably heard that ad nauseam. We all know what that is. The Alabama Department of Public Health, this is Alabama, no mask gatherings, less than 50, and a six-foot distance. Senior adults, immunocompromised, should avoid gatherings of 10-plus. Retail businesses, including restaurants, patronage at 50% of normal allowable capacity. Restaurants should maintain six-foot distance between tables. Public buildings should consider whether visitation may be limited, hospital, nursing homes assisted living. All persons should consider whether out-of-state travel plans may be delayed or canceled. Participants in religious service events, weddings, funerals, family events, should exercise prudence, maintain consistent six-foot distance between participants if possible. What are we doing? Number one, we're walking a fine line. It's very difficult managing an economy and everyday life, and then the threat of a virus that is not yet established, but seems to be highly contagious, and has the possibilities of severe ramifications. What we're doing is, or let's make this very clear, the beaches in the city of Orange Beach are the state of Alabama's beaches. We have no control over those beaches. We can't close those beaches, we can't in any way enter those beaches, all we can do is try to police those beaches. There is already an alcohol ban in place on all state of Alabama beaches. We are making sure and going to begin to enforce no large gatherings anywhere on the beaches, including spring breakers. We're going to take a very hard line with spring breakers. We're working with restaurants and all businesses to be socially responsible. We're working with all of our businesses to share the burden, short-term, share the sacrifice, to hopefully preserve long-term health and our economy. We're limiting seating in restaurants, limited seating, asking for more outdoor seating, takeout, modifying or eliminating salad bars, buffets, things of that nature. Support our local restaurants, if we can, with carryout or gift cards. Any way we can help the guys now in a tough time will be, well, I'm sure will be greatly appreciated, and that's all of our businesses. We are encouraging all bars, if they stay open, to try to shift as much consumption outside and spread folks out as best they can. We're asking folks not to stockpile, discourage hoarding, you're actually taking from your neighbor. I'm one of those that didn't get any toilet paper. Please be wary of lines. Most all of our grocery stores were backed up anywhere from 6 to 12 deep, and everybody on top of each other. Be courteous to the elderly, let them move ahead, move quickly if you can help them, and we're encouraging all businesses to find a way to set aside time for our elderly or their, whoever's helping them or aids, for a time specific for them. City services, all of our police and firemen on duty and ramped up, everyone is essentially on call. Please be courteous if you make a call and you have any type of respiratory distress, signs or symptoms, please let us know ahead of time so they can be prepared. Our city offices will remain open, but we're encouraging folks to try to make phone calls, make appointments, and handle as much outside the office as we can. We will be modifying our lobbies to maintain distances between our employees and residents who need help, and we're asking every business to do the same. He'll further notice, the Orange Beach Recreation Center and Aquatic Center have stopped all new memberships, day passes, and guests of members. All fitness and aquatic classes will still be open to those, to our members and those who hold prepaid cards. Recreational league play has been suspended and may or may not resume depending on what transpires in the next few weeks. We are trying to make sure our seniors know if they have help. We're compiling a list of homebound, ill, whatever might be the case, so that they have a contact in the mayor's office if they need something. Our police, our fire, our community servants, employees, whoever is available, will be running errands, doing whatever we can do to help them be able to stay in if that's what they want to do, or if they're just not able, help get what they need. We're reaching out to all our church families, other faith-based organizations like Christian Service Center, to help us provide assistance and be a resource for us. So if you know of anyone, have them call the mayor's office and have them leave their number, contact information, and Glenda or Holly will take care of them and make sure that they know how to contact us to get something done if they need it done. There's been a lot of questions about our childcare program. President Trump asked that we find a way to establish childcare for those first responders, essential services, employees, that would need childcare so they could remain on the job. That is what we started, or how we started, was to create a childcare program for our employees' children. After talking it through and realizing we were going to have to staff up anyway, and we had the staff, we decided to open it up to any school-aged child in the city of Orange Beach that went to one of our Orange Beach schools, if their parents were working. It's also important that we evaluate their nutritional needs. We have kids on school programs that may or not go lacking, and we're going to work through either backpack program or some type of program to make sure that they do not go hungry or they get what they need. We're also seeking a nurse to be on site as we will screen all children as they come in. She will screen and watch children all day long. Any child that distributes any type of symptoms that would be suspect, would, we would call their parents and ask them to take them home. Camp Sunshine will be kindergarten through second grade. Expect Excellence will be third through sixth grade. It will be a program from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., March 18th till April 3rd, then at April 3rd, depending on what the schools do, we'll make our decisions. We made this decision because we don't want to limit options. There are single moms out there that do not have the luxury of staying home with their children. They have to work to pay the bills. They have to have an option, and we're giving them an option. If you're blessed enough to be able to stay home with your children, you know, proud for you, but not everybody has that option. So our goal with the city of Orange Beach is try not to eliminate options, but to create Testing, that will be up through Alabama Department of Public Health if they want us to test. We will evaluate it and do everything we can help if we make sense for us to do it. We have not been asked at this time. So, I'm gonna briefly go through our Camp Sunshine and Expect Excellence, which is originally what this was all about, because there was a lot of questions about what was going to happen going forward. We have a new adult fitness center coming. It will essentially, once construction begins, eliminate the Camp Sunshine facility, so we have to move those children somewhere. So we're working with Principal Moss at the elementary school. He's been very happy to help us find space either in the cafeteria, the gym, and the schoolyard, so that is an option. We are looking at working with the school board on where the module, the middle school module will go when our middle schoolers go to the new school. It may be needed for increased numbers at the elementary school. If not, it may be something we can use for after-school and summer care. Camp Sunshine, we may be able to split it and use half, and they use half. So we're working with the county and Principal Moss and Mr. Tyler to try to figure out how to make that happen, but we will have Camp Sunshine, and it will be somewhere, and we will continue Expect Excellence at whatever point in time we feel like it's appropriate to do so. I think there's been an oversight on our part, and in talking with the council, Expect Excellence for our children is at no cost, but we have had a cost for Camp Sunshine, and I have to take, I have to take the blame on that one. I should have realized that that probably wasn't fair, so at this time, we're going to eliminate the cost for Camp Sunshine, and there'll be no charge to any of our school This is the tennis courts and the high school module. It may stay, it may not, we don't know yet, again, working with the county. That module may become our Camp Sunshine or other, some other types of facilities. So, we're gonna make this as quick and brief as I could so that we can answer as many questions as we possibly could. So, council, have y'all got anything y'all would like to add?
I think you've covered it, Mayor.
Thank y'all for the help today. All right, we will be glad to answer any questions. Just all I ask is that they be constructive and that they be, you know, not personal in any nature, but I do hope people understand this is a very difficult situation, and like I said earlier, it is a very fine line to walk between protecting people's health, but also at the same time realizing we have an economy that is important to a lot of people who still have to pay their bills. We have to find middle ground. The two extremes of extreme profit at the risk of help is not acceptable. Totally shut the city down, close the roads down, is not acceptable. There has to be middle ground in some way to do that. We're making decisions based on fact, research, data. We're trying to find, make decisions that are effective and make sense, not acting out of fear or hysteria. We can't do that. They gotta be evidence-based, in my humble opinion, and they gotta show some degree of efficacy to put them in place, and I think that's the, that's the lead we've taken at this point in time. Every day is a new day. Every day will be evaluated, just like we did in the oil spill. There's so many parallels to what we're experiencing right now and what we experienced 10 years ago, but we're prepared, and we have confidence that we can get through this and we will deal with it. We've already been there, so this is gonna be a piece of cake. We're gonna get it done. Questions? Comments? Anybody see anything?
Mayor, if I would, it's a fine line when you're trying to help everyone and everyone that does not have any symptoms. You see all the guidelines, and the guidelines are good. These are by, these are from professional people that really know what it will take to keep from spreading the virus. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, we're trying to flatten the curve and to stop the spread. We can do that in conjunction with helping people that go from paycheck to paycheck, and they have to have, they have to work. So when you close the schools down, and they have no, you know, so that their student, their children has no place to go, it's hard for them to afford a childcare, and then they're closing childcare also. So, the neat thing about what the city can provide that we've already stood up is Camp Sunshine and Expect Excellence. And so, what a great resource to have for those children and helping the parents maintain their jobs and maintain their livelihood. And this is gonna be a set time. Right now, the uncertainty of it is what's driving all of us crazy, and it's giving, it's raising the anxiety, and it's getting all of us, you know, to where we just, we don't, because we don't, we're Americans, we want to know what's going to come next, and we don't, we don't, we don't sit well when we just don't know. But this country has been through this many times, and it's been things that have been even bigger than what this is right now, and we will get through this, and it will be probably a lot quicker than what we ever anticipate, because this country is resilient. So, as far as your city and this mayor and council, we're trying to do, achieve all of the things and tell people what to do and be personally responsible while we keep people at work and reduce that stress off of them to where they don't have the hardship of wondering, "How am I, how's my children gonna be taken care of, and I have got to go to work?" And there's a lot of people that's in that situation. So, that's what I particularly think is really good. There's not many cities that can do this, and I am proud of Orange Beach that we have been doing it, and all we're doing is extending it a little bit, and we're gonna take special precautions when, with children come in to make sure that they are safe and that they are healthy, and we'll do everything we can to help. So I think, I just applaud those efforts, and I think it's the right, I know it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Chair.
And to mention the first responders that we have in our city, because we would be the first ones to call if we didn't have our ambulances, or our firemen, or our police officers, in case somebody gets in trouble, whether it be medical or just, you know, criminal. So there's opportunities there for those first responders to have their children here too, because we all know we depend on them. So I know that there's been numerous texts to me and emails about that, and that issue is that issue. We have to have our first responders to help.
Thank you. I, I don't mean this to be preachy or condescending in any way, but I do think we need to put this in perspective, because with a 24/7 news cycle, there is hysteria out there. In 2017, 2018, there were 61,000 deaths due to the flu, flu-related illnesses, illnesses. 810,000 hospitalizations, 45 million cases of the flu. Today, we have 5,000 cases of coronavirus and 90 deaths. The mortality rate will end up being no worse than the flu before all the testing is done and the numbers are tabulated. Having seen those numbers, do not dismiss, nor do I not think that this is something that we have to deal with, but from a pragmatic perspective, to me, the most effective way to deal with it in our community is to identify those at risk and identify a program to help them stay protected, stay at home, because out of the 90-some odd deaths, the greatest majority, if not all, were health-compromised individuals, elderly individuals. So it's very much skewed to a very, very small segment of the population. 50% of all cases are essentially asymptomatic. 80 to 85% of all cases have, are asymptomatic or minimal symptoms and pass within just a very short period of time. So we gotta keep in perspective what we're dealing with, try to put all our efforts toward what is effective, and that is the elderly. That is what we gotta focus on and deal with. Most kids have an immune, from everything I've read and seen, their immune system is almost immune to this virus. So we have to be smart about how we approach the steps we take, knowing that everybody in this city matters in every way, from one end of the spectrum to the other, whether it be health or whether it be their economic concerns. So, okay.
I would ask, Mayor, that if any of you in the audience know someone who is alone, they don't even have to really be elderly, but just someone who is alone that would benefit from us touching base with them or helping in any way we can, please communicate that to the mayor's secretary. Holly, do you want to stand up and give the number for that?
Mayor Glenda will answer your call and take all the information down.
So help us refine that list so that no one is left behind in Orange Beach.
Mayor, early on in Facebook, there's a lot of questions. A lot of people are having issues, just trying to understand why the beaches can't be closed. They're looking at other areas around the country, so if you could reiterate what you talked about.
Right. I would assume the beaches can be closed, but that will be a decision that will have to come from Montgomery. It has nothing to do with the city of Orange Beach. We have no bearing on the state of Alabama beaches. We have no authority to close them. We can't block off access to them. That's just out of our control, and I think we've learned in the past, we deal with what we can control and we let go of what we can't. This surrender prayer was not just a plaque on grandma's wall, so we have to deal with what we have in front of us and be pragmatic. So, the beaches are open. We're going to patrol the beaches. We're gonna do everything we can do to disperse large groups, large gatherings. We're gonna monitor alcohol consumption. We're gonna make sure that we stick by our spring break mantra of no underage drinking, no drugs. You come down here and behave, if you're coming to Orange Beach, you go to jail. That has not changed and will not change. We have a large number of spring breakers here. It is somewhat the perfect storm in that a lot of them are all out at the same time. They can't go to Texas, they can't go to Cancun, can't go to Disney World, they're coming to Orange Beach. So the numbers are huge. We have a lot of second homeowners, condo owners or residences that are here because they don't want to be in Birmingham. They don't want to be in Tuscaloosa. They don't want to be where there's more issues, greater issues, difficulties with shopping, whatever it might be. They want to be here, they own property, and they have every right to be here. So we have a lot of people here for a lot of different reasons, but they're not all tourists. They're not all tourists.
Other questions, Mayor, about just locals not being able to get necessities at grocery stores, and they're concerned about that and feel...
Well, we're all concerned about it. I don't know, again, I don't know what we can do to fix it. It's a distribution issue. There are, there's plenty of food out there to be had, but there's gotta be a distribution ability and a distribution chain to move it from wherever it is stored, warehoused, to distribution centers. Right now, we've got people that, I don't know if this is gonna be a long-term phenomenon. I've been, I've been in and out of all the grocery stores, watching and talking to people. What I gathered is, we have a lot of people here that showed up at the same time. We had a lot of people hoarding out of hysteria, there's no doubt. Hoarding was going on, and if I could have found some toilet paper, I would have hoarded. But the point I'm making is, it's a unique set of circumstances that will hopefully line itself out over the next few weeks. We have a lot of people that are here for longer than just a week and bought groceries up for two to three weeks. So there's a lot of factors in why, right now, there are shortages, but in talking with the managers of the store, they're bending over backwards to accelerate and increase their shipments in as much as they possibly can. Again, I go back to trying to find a time where our seniors or those that are in need can go in and not be burdened to get what they need or have somebody get it for them. The rest of us, we're just gonna have to stand in line and be courteous until this passes, because there is no fix for it if everybody's buying groceries for three weeks at one time.
Another question, Mayor, was about Camp Sunshine, whether it will be free for residents just for the short term, or is this a long-term thing?
Camp Sunshine will be free for residents for as long as Expect Excellence is free. Right now, the mayor and council feel like that is the best money we can spend and invest is on our children. There are a lot of kids that may not be able to be in the program if there's a charge. I am perfectly fine with that being part of our budget and allowing that to continue on, and I think at this time, the council feels the same way. Y'all chime in anytime you'd like, but, now, I'm not saying that in sometime in the future, there might be a time when we have to charge some nominal fee to help cover expenses, depending on the wealth of the city, the finances, there's a lot of variables, but right now, I think we're all in agreement, we're gonna keep it free until such time there has to be a change made.
One other question is about just refunds from rental management companies. I guess some are not doing that, so...
Yeah, we've had a lot of issues with refunds, you know, that I can't help there. The city of Orange Beach's policy is we are refunding in full brides that are canceling, event center dates that are canceling, but you know what, we have the financial ability to do that. There are some companies that are very small that might now, this being the worst time to be in a financial crisis, may not have the ability to refund, because they may have used those upfront payments to carry them through the off-season. Now, I recommended to somebody earlier that she say, she or he, the company allow, I'm sorry, that they tell their patrons who put money upfront that there would be refunds made, but it'll be 180 days from now. After summer, after hopefully they've replenished their cash, then they will get their money back, but right now, there's a lot of people not in position to do it. I don't believe there's anybody out there that would not understand that and accept 180-day payment or sometime in the future. I think 99% of folks would go along and understand that. If they don't, then, well, then they're, they're out of luck. But the city cannot take action and require anybody to do anything in the private sector. Y'all add anytime, anything I want to add to it, y'all jump in. Anything else?
There was one specific one about, is there a plan to possibly go to businesses and ask them to reduce the amount of products they're giving out to customers so there's some for others?
I believe most, all of the grocery stores has already started doing that. I think the staples, like I said, toilet paper, milk, eggs, I think they are limiting how many you can check out at one time. I don't know that they're doing it for every category. I don't know if they're doing it for canned goods, but I know they were doing it for certain staples that we're all demanding, especially those things that was flying off the shelf and being emptied. But we are urging all of our distribution centers to try to evaluate the buying patterns and see if we can't put something in place to spread it out over a greater number of people, and I think everyone's trying to do that. I think this is gonna pass, I hope so, but I think for the next week, 10 days, it's gonna be tough. Wow, after the social media buzz we've had the last few days, I thought there were a lot more questions.
There's a lot of comments. Apparently have a lot of experts.
Tony, there's a tremendous amount of comments. I'm reading them.
Let's just, let's talk about...
I'm breathing before I respond. For the 800 people on Facebook and for the 100 of you who seem to say whatever you think you should say without the regard, we are in a tough, tough situation. The first thing I'm gonna say is this, we live in a country that endures. We have made it through every pandemic and everything there is. There is no measles problem, there is no AIDS problem. There are a ton of things that we've made it through, and we're gonna make it through this. The worst thing that can happen is panic and fear and people just blasting and saying whatever they think. Everybody has to think for themselves. If you feel unsafe, stay home. If you need help, call your neighbors or call us, we'll deliver groceries to you or we'll help you. We'll do whatever we can. For those of you who are saying, "Call the governor," we have been in touch with the governor's office. They are the only one that can make this decision. We cannot make the decision to close the beaches. For the spring breakers at the pass, we're very well aware of it. We see the videos, we know what's going on, and we have police there, and we're trying to stop every bit of it. If your parents are spring breakers, make them come home. You're responsible as well. Don't put all of this on government. Don't put all of this on government. We're going to do everything we can. If you want to close your business because you think it's the safest thing, then we encourage you to do so. There are businesses here that have made that choice, the Florby Mama being one of them. I applaud what John did, and that's his decision. Lulu's is supposed to be closing tonight. These are business owners' decisions. But you can't expect us to take a business owner, like we have two sitting right out here, that have their entire livelihood invested in it, and if they lose the season, they go bankrupt. Put yourself in our shoes to make that decision. We're trying to balance that we want to keep you safe, we want your garbage picked up, we want you to have police, we want you to have fire. We're trying to take care of those kids as mandated, in an email from the president's office, to take those resources and do what we can. We're sanitizing every door handle, everything at City Hall. We're setting lines up at City Hall to make sure people don't come in contact and to get further away. We are taking steps in every direction, but we're in uncharted territory, just like you are at home. So, all I can ask is, please, number one, be polite. Number two, be patient. As the mayor stated earlier, if you're in line and you see an elderly, please let them go first. Keep your distance from them and help them to their car, do something for them. Step up, help your neighbor. But if you don't want to come to the beach, don't come to the beach. If you're watching this from afar, encourage people not to come if that's what you want. The beach may be a safe place to be with fresh air blowing, and the heat, because the heat is what kills it. We are not doing this because we're greedy for money. The city of Orange Beach has been blessed in a lot of ways, and we try everything we can do to give back to the community, and to keep building, and to keep doing. But what I encourage is calmness, no fear, and politeness. Guys, this is a tough time for all of us. Everybody in this room and everybody watching wants meat in their freezer, they want canned goods, they want rice and beans, and they want toilet pa... I don't really, I can't understand the toilet paper thing. I want food before toilet paper. I'll jump in the shower. But, I mean, I don't understand that portion, but for the rest of it, we are all fighting the exact same battle. And as a city, we're in probably the toughest predicament, more so than BP, more so than a hurricane. Guys, BP and hurricanes are regional. We can pull resources from anywhere. But if you think we're responsible for empty shelves, it's every city in America, everywhere. They're closing 78 ABC stores at 6 o'clock, y'all missed it by 31 minutes. But, I mean, we are really concerned. We are trying to do every single thing we can do to help as a city, but we do not have the authority to step up and tell people to close their business. You'd be the same people fussing, saying, "Too much government, we stepped over the line, how and dare you tell us to do that?" You live in the United States of America. This is not China. If you feel like you're unsafe, stay home. But I promise you, as a city, we have been in meetings all day long, we have been in phone contact with the governor's office, in other cities. We are trying. So, please be patient, send your suggestions, but understand, we are in uncharted waters the same as you.
Thank you, Jeff. So, if there are comments that, again, we don't want to run from anything, so if there's something we need to address, I would love to address it, because now's the time, if you've got anything there, so...
I think, I think many people want to know why, why you're not calling the governor's office, so...
Well, I was on the phone with the governor's office at 3 o'clock this afternoon for an hour. And it's amazing what people don't know what I do. You have no idea what I do all day long, most of you. If you did, you would probably give me a pay raise. So, we have been on the phone with people, our lobbyists, Governor Rod, we've been on the phone with a lot of people, trying to understand and make the right decisions. And what I just don't understand is why someone on social media would know that they know the answer, but they have essentially zero information by which they came to that conclusion. I don't understand that. Try being informed, not opinionated, is what I would say. But, you can call me, 747-8282, 747-8282. One more time, 747-8282. So, call me if you've got a question. And if you've got a complaint, you can call me, and I'll address it. You may not get the answer you want, but we will tell you what we're feeling, what we're doing, and the direction we're going. But I agree with Jeff, we will not step out there and tell people how to run their business, when to shut their business down, tell people where to go, when to stay home. Because I'm not staying home, ladies and gentlemen. That's just not going to happen. My wife would divorce me if I stayed home. So, I'm going to continue my life, and I'm going to take the risk, and I'm going to protect, practice those safe practices as recommended, but I'm not going to run from it, and I'm not going to hide from it. So, I'm going to do everything I can do, just like this council, to protect those at Anybody else? Anything else? What's we got?
I think your answer and Mr. Boyd's answer are part of what answers a lot of these questions, where people question, "Why are you not trying to protect your citizens?" and you are. And I think that's the key. At the same time, you're letting businesses make the same decisions they're required to make, and try to protect their employees, and at the same time, have an economy. So, so as we move forward, you had mentioned earlier the second homes, maybe discuss, a lot of people are here with a second home.
Right. Well, let's go back to not protecting your citizens. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I hear from the other side as much as I've heard from your side, there are just as many people in this city that are begging us not to shut anything down. Do not stop us allowing us to make a living. Protect us, take care of us, don't, don't fall into the hysteria. So, believe me, there's a tit-for-tat here, I promise you. And we're, and as I stated earlier, we're trying to find middle ground. We don't go to either extreme. And if we stay in the middle ground, and respect each other, we'll be all right. But when you get on the extreme, then I'm pretty much wasting my time talking to you, and you're pretty much wasting your time talking to me. Because we're not shutting the city down, but at the same time, we're taking precautions as suggested by the Department of, Alabama Department of Health, CDC, and our President, President Trump. And I guess we've beat that dead horse enough, so... Anything else?
I think, I think from a food service, some of the things we're trying to encourage with the minimized seating, and the outdoor seating, and the potential takeout, drive foods, all of that, is some of the discussion here, as we talk about access to food.
Well, there's something we should consider. Anytime we close one portal, that puts pressure on another portal. If we're having trouble getting food, and we take away the restaurants, what does that do to the problem with getting food? Because you got to buy food, fill a meal in if you're not buying it at a restaurant. So, the restaurants being opening, open, if they're practicing the socially responsible thing, and I don't know if I even like that word, but they're working with us. Every single one of the restaurateurs I've talked to are open to working with us and taking all precautions. None of them have barked, or balked at reducing their numbers, spreading their tables out. They've all been willing to jump in, but at the same time, they have concerns about being shut down, just like with all their employees have concerns of being shut down. So, anytime you close a portal, if you close the beaches, and I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't, you close the beaches, those people are going to go somewhere. These people, most of them are here now not because of the beaches, they're here because they feel safer, and in a better place than where they came from. So, if they can't get on a beach, then they're going to be going somewhere. They're going to be in vehicles driving somewhere. Well, we already have traffic, as we have it. So, again, every action has a reaction. We're trying to think through our actions, so that the reactions that happen make sense, and are not a consequence that is injurious to anyone. And I think I mentioned this, we have as many people here, I think, right now, that own second homes here in condos, as we do people vacationing. Those people have a right to be here. They are here in their property that they paid for. How would I ever ask them to go home? How would you or any of us ever ask the people, those folks, to go home? I don't think we could. I couldn't in good charges. Anybody in the audience got a question? Polly? Raise your hand.
I think one of the other things, Mayor...
You're scratching her net, yeah.
And we have a microphone.
Don't go to an auction, so...
One of the things, Mayor, I'd like to reiterate two things, I think. One is the, the after-school, let's just call it the daycare option, is an option. It is purely an option. It is not something that people are required to do. So, we're trying to do this for those who have to go to work and who have no other options. Something, you want to expand on that one more time, as an option?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've used the word "option" half a dozen times, and it is an option that people want, people need, but people requested. It is an option we had to have for policemen, firemen, public works people, all types of our employees that we got to have on the job. We need them. And I promise you, if your trash wasn't getting picked up, or the grass wasn't getting cut, or you didn't have a paramedic show up at your door, because they were all at home, you'd be raising cane. So, if, if it's okay for them to work and to serve, then it's okay for others to do the same if they so choose, in my humble opinion.
And Mayor, it's being utilized. We've had a lot of sign-ups, and we've had people from other communities, Gulf Shore, excuse me, Gulf Shores and Foley, have several calls today wanting to sign their children up for what we're doing here in Orange Beach.
We have had a lot of positive comments, that they appreciate the city of Orange Beach concerned enough about working parents to offer this, and I appreciate that, makes all of us feel good that we hear that. So, again, there's a counterargument to every argument you see on social media. And sometimes I truly believe the smallest crowd is always the loudest. And the folks that are happy, they just smile at me, shake their hand, and say thank us when they see us, so...
But we're not...
But we're not opening it up to other cities. This is for city residents and their children, and city employees.
That is correct.
Let's make sure we're, we're still on board with that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
And it will be limited, that, that will not change.
Is our medical system prepared for this? I'm just, I'm using that as a bill, and, I mean, if Italy could have had a meeting three weeks prior to what they've got going on right now, I can assure you, they would have done things a lot differently. And, I don't want to be in a situation where I am having to decide, well, this person gets a ventilator, and this person doesn't, and we have all these people down here for a little bitty hospital, that I can assure you, if not prepared.
If, well, I did talk with the Director of Nursing today...
Can you repeat the question, Mayor? Repeat the question, I don't know...
The question is, is our medical community prepared? There is no medical community prepared for the apocalyptic scenario that some people say could happen. A million-plus patients on 150 ventilators, that's not a possibility. People are going to die. But there's nothing that anyone's going to do to prevent that, if it is the worst-case scenario. All we can do is do the best we can with what we can control. I did talk with the Director of Nursing at South Baldwin today. They have had no positive coronavirus test. All were negative. They have a few more people in isolation at this time, waiting on the test results. They are screening everyone that comes into the hospital. They're isolating anyone that might present with something that even resembled the virus. But so far, there's been no cases there. They are fully staffed, they've sent no one home, and they are, they are moving right along as if, there's no issue right now. Because right now, there is no issue at the hospital. Bronchitis, allergies, flu is more of an issue right now than the virus. So, but I do understand, that is to me, the unique, in studying this, that is the unique difference, is the critical respiratory issues that the virus bring on with those that are severely capacitated in some way. So, I understand. And that is the one fear with this virus, is it all seems to focus on treatment that would require a ventilator. And I get that concern. But, you know, we only have so many, and we just pray, let the Good Lord intervene, that we don't get to that number. And like Jeff or the guy I said earlier, the curve flattens, to where if we do see people getting to that level of treatment required, that it has gotten to such a flat curve that they can move them in, move them out, and have adequate ventilators to take care of them. That's what we're hoping for. Yes, sir?
There's a couple of questions about testing sites. I know it's early on for here. Like you said in the slide, we'll work with...
Yeah, if the Alabama Department of Health requests that we have a testing site here, unless there's a reason we shouldn't, that I don't know of, we will absolutely cooperate and make that happen. We just haven't had that request yet. So, that's just, that's not an issue. We will help any way we can with testing, if requested. Stop while you're ahead, is that what you said? Anything else? Anybody else?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was talking about people. I'm not one to speak on, but I think the lady, old Billard, has already bought supplies for backpacks.
Great.
Who sent our supplies to the house to us?
Great.
And the serving, and the others.
Well, anything we can do to help distribute that, anything we need to do to help fill the void if we run low, just let us know, because we can, we can all make that happen. There's no doubt in my mind about that, so... Well, just, we're here, I really would love to get every question or comment handled before we leave, so that everyone truly understands where we all stand. So, please, if you've got any questions, or you know someone else that had a question, and you want to ask it for them, now's the time, so we can get this behind us, pull together, and go forward.
Mayor, I think, when you go through these type things, the goodness of good people and their hearts is always, it always rises to the top. And so, I think, I think we're seeing that. But there's a group that contacted me this, today, said, "We are wanting to bring meals to the, the homebound, or the elderly, or the shut-ins." And so, I said, "All right." And I've already mentioned it to Chief Kemerling, and we're going to try to put that together, and where we will have that resource, because they're saying, "We will go anywhere in the city and deliver meals." And I said, "Thank you." And so, we're going to put that together, to where if anyone is in need, you just call the City Hall, and we will get somebody to deliver the meals to that premise. And so, that's always, you know, we get kind of bogged down, but the goodness of the American heart always rises above any situation that we have.
It's kind of hard. It's all over the place.
We just want to take a few more minutes before we adjourn, just to make sure we address comments and things of that nature, so... How you doing, sir?
There's comments about flattening the curve, and understanding that.
Flattening the curve?
Long-term.
It truly is reducing transmission. You reduce transmission, you flatten the curve. And if you don't reduce transmission, it spikes, and when it spikes, then you overwhelm the system, you overwhelm ICU and the ventilators. So, I think I said, we had about 150, if I think correctly, 150,000 in the United States, which is really not that many in a serious pandemic, where there's, it's all respiratory-oriented at the critical, critical state. So, that's why we do what we do with trying to identify those who have signs, symptoms, staying away from each other. The simple, wash your hands, sneeze on your arm, stay home if you're ill, and if you are, and I don't got to repeat it, if you're health compromised, you have to take it upon yourself to stay isolated, and to make sure you monitor who you come in contact with. Because 50% of the cases, from what I understand, are asymptomatic. People have no idea they have it. So, we're trying our best, but we are blessed to be in a warm climate, which I hope makes a difference here. And we'll see. Does that, does that answer the flattening the curve question, y'all think?
Mayor, I think one thing we want to reiterate to everybody, as we kind of come to the end of this discussion, is that daily, we will update the website, orangebeachal.gov, and that'll be at the very front page, and we'll have that information updated with any changes. Obviously, there's a lot of changes. The lead agency is the State Department of Public Health, so we'll be watching for continued changes that affect our restaurants, and, and other activities that relate to the supply chain we've discussed, and anything related to that. So, I think it's an important thing. Obviously, a lot of information on this, and it changes really by the hours, we've seen today. So, we're going to look at public safety, fire and, fire and police chiefs are going to guide us with a lot of this. And again, we're dealing with spring break and the virus, so we're trying to manage that.
One last thing, Friday, early Saturday, cancellations were through the roof, numbers were down, and then as if someone turned a light switch on Saturday and Sunday, it started backing up. People started coming. I think a lot of things fell in place if they made the decision they were leaving home. So, last week, and this week, was a totally different scenario... So last week and this week was a totally different scenario for us and a totally different set of facts and circumstances by which to create, or position on. Immediately Sunday, we all started talking and set a meeting for today to put together the program. So this large group of people and a large group of spring breakers is a two-day phenomenon. It just happened and essentially happened overnight. So we're catching up as quickly as we can. But I do think we responded relatively quickly to something that none of us expected in a million years to happen this quickly.
Tony, I'd like to reiterate the point that the City of Orange Beach does not own any beach access. All the beach accesses that are public in Orange Beach are state access points. We help keep them clean, and we help police them. We help lifeguard the beaches. But we don't own the beaches. They are owned by the state of Alabama. So if there is, if you do have a concern, and as we talked earlier, we have been in contact with the governor's office. But the governor's office, Governor Kay Ivey is the one that has the ability to close the beaches, not the City of Orange Beach. So we're very well aware of the spring breakers, as I mentioned earlier, and we're very concerned about it. We're doing what we can to limit the amount of them at the beaches. There is no drinking of alcohol at state parks, and those beaches fall under that. So it gives us a hand at the state parks to be able to try to handle that. But please, if you, the concern is about the beaches, call Governor Kay Ivey's office about it.
I do hope we were able to answer a lot of folks' questions. I do hope that we provide information that will hopefully make some of you feel better, no matter where you are in your stance on what we should or should not do. But I do want to give you my number one more time. So please, call me before you go on social media and make a statement that you don't have the information to make a statement about. 747-8282, 747-8282.